And tonight's education update on Anniston City Schools will follow up on the charter schools subject. Recently, an Anniston Town Hall meeting was held. The public, Anniston School Board members, and the Anniston City Council were invited. This program is entitled "Role Call." Sheila Smoot was moderator.
I'm going to announce who is not here. You guys know me, those of you who knew me when I got here, I was sent here for a reason. I'm a hard-hitting investigative reporter. I came in here two years ago, and I cannot believe it. I covered City Hall at Anniston, I covered the school board, I covered the state lawmakers. I just cannot believe that you got this many answers. I don't care what happens. I don't know what's going on here. I hope nothing breached what's really going on. Number one, Mr. Thompson, Anniston City Schools, not here. Let me rephrase this. I'm gonna take role. Like you see what you're seeing. Mr. Thompson, Anniston City Schools, absent. Ms. Brown, Anniston City Schools, present. Ms. Monkberg, Anniston City Schools, present. Ms. Fraser, Anniston City Schools, absent. Dr. Harrington, Anniston City Schools, absent. Mr. Houston, Anniston City Schools, absent. Mr. - am I saying it right? Douthat? Anniston City Schools, present. Mr. Reddick, Anniston City Schools, Anniston City Council, present. Mr. Jenkins, Anniston City Council, absent. Ms. Harris, Anniston City Council, absent. Mr. Little, Anniston City Council, present. And your mayor, Mayor Traper, Anniston City Council Mayor, Traper, absent.
So, the topics for this setting was charter schools, academics, and finances. Let's skip forward to the charter school dialogue.
I had an event happen in 2015. I got a phone call from a sorority sister. It's kind of interesting, we're talking about grief life and stuff. But this sorority sister actually worked in a different system. On February 12th, 2015, she and her husband went to a restaurant in Birmingham called The Century. I believe it's in a hotel called Tullawer Hotel. I don't know anything about the actual hotel itself, but that's what she reported to me. She and her husband happened to be in the right place to overhear a conversation. Her husband, who had done some contracting work for the city of Anniston, recognized Vaughn Stewart when he walked in. Now, in defense, or not in defense, but just to say fairly, they reported, Mr. Stewart said very little. But there were two other people that accompanied them. One was a woman who was working in Mobile. Another was a man that they didn't get any identifying descriptors about location events. He didn't say anything. But they had a lot of information about our community. They decided to talk to Mr. Stewart about charter schools because the charter school law was being proposed at the time. They went into great detail, and they said that there was a plan. A plan for Oxford to annex Weldon and Weldon High School, to dissolve the Anniston school system and to have students absorb into Calhoun County Schools, and to purchase 10th Street School from the city of Anniston to place a K-5 tour school there. The phrase "whiten up Anniston" was used. I'm using this literally from an email I mailed back tonight within minutes of talking to my sorority sister to my representatives at AEA. They needed to know immediately what had been told. I then, the next morning, called the local president. His name was Glenn Barefoot at the time. I told him every bit of what the conversation had been. I wasn't there, I didn't overhear the conversation. This is how it was reported to me. We then had a meeting with these teachers at the Carver Center. We're with the AEA local, the Anniston Education Association of Anniston and the Education Support Professionals. Then I got contacted by a local principal because many of her teachers were not able to go. And they were worried because they knew that in the bill there was a provision, if a charter school is established in the system, and the system owns the charter school, that they would still have to reapply for their job, and they didn't know what to do. That meeting was held on April 5th, 2015. In addition to a document where I detailed different components of the bill for them, highlighted some questions and things, I even created for them a little package that helped them to polish their resumes and pointers to put out there. Because it scared these teachers to death. Many of them decided to go ahead and leave the system because these conversations were being held. Now, you could say it's just hearsay. I'm from this community. I used to work for the Anderson Museum of Natural History. I called on a lot of people I know, a lot of the money, to see if I could confirm some of these comments that were overheard. The comments have been floating around for some time. As was documented on the video, charter schools have been discussed for some time. I'm not pro or against charter schools, but from a standpoint of representing educators, transparency has got to be there.
And this is what's going on. This letter is not disturbing to me because I've heard that before. Something's going on. I don't know what you want to do. I don't have a dog getting this far, at all. But y'all, so...
It's frustrating, not just for the school system, but for what we do. The people that's not here at the table for the issue that we're here for, those are the people who get to go to the meetings for the issues that we're here for, and we don't get to hear about it. And it's frustrating. It's frustrating, especially when they go to the county commission, and your county commissioner don't come and talk to you about what's going on with the state. So, it's good to have a cyclical government where everybody's communicating with everybody, and we should hear. That way, we can hear even if they attempt to have a meeting without us. And that's where the frustration is. Issues that we're obviously passionate about that affects our people, that affects our wars, two and three is important, is affected the most by the issues that we're here for. And if there's a war for an issue, all three of these guys will be here, and we probably won't even get the invite. So, it's important that everybody's brought to the table.
How many are on your board now?
It's a five-member council.
Okay, well, that's a violation of the sunshine law. You cannot meet with three people.
This should represent the city. This is how a board should look. When you got a three and two telling you how you can raise your kids, and the three and two is white, and they got their kids in another school system, there's a problem with that. Now, look at the one that's missing. If Anderson Star would've gave this, the place would've been packed with whites. I promise you that, because I've been there.
And to each of the school board groups, this is directed to you about charter schools. Dr. Harrington, we'll start with you. What is your feeling about charter schools? Are you having conversations about charter schools? Are you supportive of charter schools?
No, no, and no. Now, no, I'm asking you a question. You asked me, am I having a conversation about charter schools? You asked me my feelings about charter schools.
There's a question from the audience.
Okay.
Interesting.
If we have done our research on charter schools, if we've done our research, there are a very minute percent of charter schools that are doing what they're supposed to do. But what upsets me and why I don't support charter schools, I want to say for two reasons. Charter schools will have five years to do what they want to, like they want to. They have what they call a flexibility. I see you're naughty because you've done the research. They have a flexibility. Now, what does that mean? If I was over a charter school, it might be okay because I have some education background. But in charter schools, they're basically for profit. And the flexibility that they are giving, only 60% of their teachers have to be certified. Well, they wouldn't let me have 90% of my teachers certified in Cleveland County. And that's faulty. Because what happens in five years is nothing happens. They close that up, and they move, and okay, we got the charter school, and we got our kids. The kids, the money for our kids, to the charter school. They close it up in five years, the kids come back, but the money's gone.
Are you for charter schools? Does that mean you're for letting charter schools have an opportunity to?
I'm not. Until you can show me statistically, I'm a number, until you can show me statistically. And they will, they'll point out four or five, well, some of our people told us, and that's what we do. We educate four or five, until we get to the root of the problem and it has nothing to do with poverty. Being poor means you don't mean you can learn. Nobody is talking about teacher preparation.
Well, let me speak to charter schools real quick because I know you're about to close this hour.
Yeah, I was gonna go to, yeah, to charter schools and meetings.
I've had about six meetings about charter schools. And like Dr. Harrington, I don't know that I can support charter schools, but I have to entertain the conversation on any school that might help our kids. So, initially, I had a conversation with all Stewart. And I'm sorry, I talked to the board and I talked to anybody in this city when I got here. And kind of missing, actually, in regards to our conversation, but we talked about a number of things. He didn't force charter schools or anything at me. We had a conversation, just as I would have with my older brother, about a number of different things. And so, my initial conversation was about, and thank you, Ms. Morgan, for pointing out the meeting in Birmingham, because she brought that to me, and I thank you for the partnership we have. So, the initial meeting was held at the Fennel. I went to the Fennel with the mayor. He invited me. And again, I'll go anywhere with an elected official and talk about anything they want to talk about because one thing my mother trained me to do is, you don't have to say it, you don't have to support something you don't believe in. Tell the people where you stand and step away from them. So, I had the chance, in a breakfast meeting with Dale Marsh and the mayor, to talk about charter schools. Here's what I pitched, Ms. Morgan. I said, "I'll talk to you in length about charters, but here's what I'd like to see of county. If you just gotta have a charter in Calhoun County, make it a county-wide charter." Because I don't know that Anniston City Schools can sustain a charter school. We're trying to reduce our education footprint, and you're trying to make it, trying to broaden. So, that was the discussion we had. I said, "Make it a county-wide charter. Allow us to send our middle-through-high school kids who were high-performing to that school, but allow us also to maintain our average daily membership." That means if we send 100 kids to the charter school for academics, or IP, or career tech, if we send 100 kids, they still are on our road. We're just sending them over there to get the best instruction money they can buy, and then they're coming back to our facilities, and they graduate from Anniston High School.
You can't do that. That's not legal.
No, we're not going to debate that. I'm just telling you what happened. But with a charter, I think you can do anything. Ain't that the beauty of the charter? You can almost get by with anything. Ain't that what they were selling us?
That's what they were selling us.
They were selling us that. So, if you say that, well, we'll let you maintain your average daily membership, and we'll let you go over to that charter for three classes, and then come back to your home base. So, be it. But that's what we were, we talked about. And then, so, the last meeting I had was with the mayor as it relates to charter. We had a school board representative in that meeting, and the same conversation was had that was held previously at the central office as it relates to charter schools. It was just an exploratory opportunity to consider an option that might work for our kids. Now, let me skip from charter to craft academy. We went on a trip to Birmingham. The entire board, I drove. I enjoyed that trip, by the way. Dale was in that meeting, along with about 30 other people, about the craft academy and how the craft academy might help our kids. Not just our kids, but kids throughout the county. It was an idea about economic development and how we could equip the kids to be able to work in these part-manual factory-type facilities and be skilled for all kinds of labor throughout this area. Now, recently, I had a meeting at Oxford High School as it relates to the Alabama School for Math and Science. This was a meeting, these are options again. So, it was a charter, craft academy as it relates to career tech, and then I had a meeting about the Alabama School for Math and Science expansion, where we might be able to take advantage of that robust curriculum down on the coast and put our kids in a position to vie for engineering, medical, those kinds of jobs. So, those are all the meetings that I've had. I don't think anyone, the board has never restricted me from meeting with anyone I need to meet with as it relates to trying to improve the opportunities we have for our kids.
So, do you feel pressured to adapt to the charter school model?
Do I feel pressured in here this morning? I hope I don't because...
Not in here, no. Outside of here.
I don't have pressure at all about anything at this point as it relates to charters. No one has nudged me, pulled me, dragged me. It's impossible because...
Every superintendent, by the way, is going through that conversation across the state, just to let y'all know.
I don't know that that's true, but...
I know it's true.
I don't know. I have not had that conversation, but in the long run, it's just like choosing a tie. You choose the one that fits you. That's the way it works for me.
State Representative Barbara Boyd was present. She weighed in on the topic.
Charter schools versus magnet schools are two different things. Let's put it on the line. Senator Marsh, whom I work with daily, is the institute of the bill for charter schools. Now, don't fool yourself. That's by design. I don't have to say anymore. You're a thinker.
Senator Dale Marsh was not present at the town hall meeting for rebuttal, but he ran his 2014 campaign ad supporting public schools.
Dale and I have been married 34 years. We've been blessed in good times and bad. He started a business, I was a teacher. Dale believes in public schools. That's where we send our children, and that's why he's reforming education. More money in the classroom, less for bureaucrats. Special interests attacked him, but I've always trusted Dale to do what's right. You can too.
A few days after the town hall meeting, school board members were all present during a work session. Charter school discussions were at the top of the agenda.
I certainly feel like we obviously had an upfront communication issue with people not knowing. And that's unfortunate, and I'd like for us to make a sincere effort, us as a board, and you, Mr. Douthat, to try to do better, even though we were not the genesis of this particular meeting. So, I looked at it as brainstorming, sharing ideas, and that's it.
Everything that happened in that meeting on the 15th, it happened three or four times over right here in this room. And I think Emily Schultz, who was part of the planning related to charters, was right here in this room and brought a lot of information.
This must be not since we've been on the floor.
No, 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 previous floor. So, I'm just saying this was a repeat, and so, there was nothing I was concerned about. Nobody, no one committed to anything, no one said anything except, "We need to think about this and take a look." And I think in addition to me seeing that at the open forum, I said that I've had meetings with our state school board representative about two or three different options.
From every possible perception of negative, there can come a positive. And I feel like we can learn from this, and when these discussions are had in the future, we probably need to open it up so that everybody knows if we have a say-so, if we have a say-so, so that there's not these misunderstandings.
But on Saturday, I understood you to say that you had had possibly about five or six years about charters. I don't know, you didn't say a timeframe to my knowledge. Over, how many years have you been here for?
From the origination of the charter legislation up to now, yes, I think I had about five or six years.
Okay, I thought I understood you. Because many of my constituents were saying, you know, they'd never heard of this. And of course, you know about us coming out.
Heard of what?
Heard of you meeting with, was it the same group of people that you met when on the 15th? Or was this a different set of people?
It was a different group of people at the table on the 15th. Some of them were the same. My initial meeting, I think I mentioned it Saturday, was with Dale Marsh and former mayor Vaughn Stewart.
Was that the one that the...
That was the first real meeting I had.
Okay, was that the one that the AEA representative referenced?
No, I was not, I was not present.
You weren't in that?
No, someone that said that I was present, but I missed that good meal.
Okay.
I was not present at that meeting.
But it's just a matter of transparency, which is what I've been preaching ever since I've been here since November 7th. And communication. You know, communicate to us, communicate to the public.
Yeah, so, it's very difficult now to communicate every meeting that you might have to everyone who might have an interest in that. Because, I mean, that's a difficult thing. I can imagine that if it's about charters, I hear what you're saying, the board needs to know. But in this case, we had two representatives for the board at that meeting. I haven't had any other meetings as it relates to charters. Since this board has been in place.
Okay, well, again, I'm asking you for...
And I didn't originate that meeting. I got the call just like much crazier, and I had no clue who would be in the room.
I think that's a moot point as to who originated. I'm just speaking about coming back and communicating.
Okay.
I'm not speaking about, as she's thinking, the genesis of it.
I was not able to attend the meeting that I'm calling, that was a community discussion meeting about some of these same things that were possibly talked about on the 15th of December on a Saturday. It's not impossible for me, it's just a little more challenging for me to get my home front taken care of properly, like I need to, to be able to come and be away out of the house. But if there's another meeting with the same kind of scaffolding and desire for discussion, I certainly will try to do my best to attend.
Like I say, it doesn't matter who originated it was, but I still am disappointed that even after the meeting was held, other than the superintendent, I had no knowledge of what was on. And the majority of the students in the Anniston school system comes from my ward since Cooper Homes has closed. And to me, it's almost, I took it like everything else that I see going on. The people making the decisions for our children are not a part of us.
And I think that's something we have to be very aware of, Dr. Harrington. I know you and I have talked about that. Yes. In one-on-one conversations. And, you know, I don't want to perpetuate at all that thinking in the community. I understand that there are two different kinds of charters. One is a public school charter. The other charters that come up are oftentimes charters that are done by corporations or charter schools. Private entities. Private entities that are not necessarily not for profit. They are for profit. They expect to make some money. And I have attended, or I have had a brochure from one of those companies that was very disturbing to me because in it, the public schools were expected to provide for the charter schools services that charter schools did not provide, such as football teams, basketball teams, bands, all other sorts of extracurricular activities, services to children who had special needs, which disturbed me a lot because all of the money is gone. Goes with the student. And I certainly know federal funds to serve those special needs that we often have in our schools. I cannot support that sort of a charter school. I am very interested in magnet schools. I think they do wonders. I've seen it happen in Jacksonville, Florida, and I think that is something that we could certainly investigate.
I think it was a great mistake in communications. It was never meant to be a private session. It was not the intent. The other thing I would say is, it's just an assumption been made that Robert Houston is for charter schools. And that assumption came from a picture on the video that came out from the play showing my picture in charter schools. Right off the bat, without looking at the video, people said I was for charter schools. No doubt, I heard it. Fact, I am for people, processes, systems, policies that make the Anniston school system better. Fact, I am for all Anniston school students reading on grade level. Fact, I am for all Anniston graduates to be college, military, or job-ready. Fact, I'm more concerned about the outputs of the Anniston school system and what you call it. Somebody else can worry about that. That's not, I don't care about that. I care about what the product that Anniston school system produces. That's important to me. For me, I was born with a purpose. I live with a purpose. And I ran for the school board for a purpose. I will not let anybody hinder me from helping the school students through lying, through intimidation. Those just don't work for me. I am committed to the students of the Anniston school system, and all these subversive behaviors that anyone tries to put forth to stop me, I'm not the one.
I sent an email out yesterday to all AEA members that summarized what had gone on because I'd had so many questions from employees, what's going on with these conversations. In it, there's a part, I clearly state, I have not felt that the school board at any time, any of y'all, have thought that charter schools was the viable option. It's just something being discussed. I summarized the meeting that was there. I encouraged them to watch the first video, and that a second video of the meeting that was held Saturday was coming. So, that's there. I'm sure, you know, if you ask some of the members, they may share the video, the email with you. If you'd like me to send you the email, I will send it to you. That is not any kind of problem. But the one thing that has been very disturbing to employees, they've been left out of the conversation, and they get told this stuff down the grapevine, very much like Anniston got told about the initial meeting in 2015 at the Century Restaurant between the two people from the outside pushing charter schools and Mayor Stewart. So, there is some concern that's there, but when you're saying it with a unified voice, and they keep hearing you with a unified voice, it reassures all of those employees. So, thank you so much for doing that and offering.
So, Ms. Morgan, there's no way anyone would be speaking with a unified voice except right here. And everyone has the right to be here for the meeting because normally, we're gonna have you at five, especially for a topic like that. And when we had that topic on the floor, it was in an open meeting where everyone could be here, then there's no way anyone would put me in a position to be disrespectful and unfair to the employees that we also serve. So, that's never gonna happen.
Calhoun County Commission supports schools in Calhoun County and Anniston Hall. We levy a 1 cent sales tax every year that goes to all the schools in Calhoun County. One million goes to Anniston City Schools, and we don't try to tell them how to spend it. We give it to them, and the commissioners also supplement their 1 cent sales tax to all schools in the city. We give them money for field trips, classrooms outside. We provide a lot for the Anniston City Schools, and we will continue to do this.
Commissioner, do you all give that allocation yearly?
Year. We vote it on the area, year.
And it goes directly to who?
To the county.
To the entire county schools?
Entire county.
How much does the city of Anniston school system give?
Does that money go straight to the school or is it sent around the city?
It goes to, it goes to city schools.
Okay, so, do you know how much the Anniston City gets out of it? I'm not trying to put you in a box.
Over a million dollars.
So, they get individually from the county commission, an allocation of a million dollars to city schools.
For now, organizers plan to have quarterly town hall meetings. Smoot says "Role Call" will continue to be called at the upcoming meetings. at the upcoming meetings.